So, we would please stand and have the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Guy for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's remain standing. This evening, our kind and heavenly Father, we come to you thanking for this day. Thank you for bringing us to this point in the day. Thank you for watching over us all day long and watching over our families. Lord, tonight, we want to say a special prayer for our clerk, clerk to counsel, Karen Lee, who lost her father tonight. Lord, watch over her and show her that you will always be there to comfort her in this time. Then, Lord, we ask that you watch over each and every citizen and government official in this building and out working in our county tonight. These are all of the things I ask in your son. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. Before we get to approve the minutes, I'd like to say thank you for Mr. Wilson for taking the chair. Last meeting, I was at a conference in Myrtle Beach. It was on the eighth. Okay. Is that good? Okay. Again, I was not here and from what I understand, he did an admirable job. And thank you, Mr. Wilson, for that. Okay, moving right along to the approval of the minutes of November the 20th. Can I get a motion on that?
I'm sorry. I motion we approve the minutes.
Okay. You got a second? A motion is a second. All in, any discussion? You hear no discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all accept. You were here, Mr.?
Mr. Key.
I was not here. So, it's six, boy. I was not here to vote on that. Okay, moving along. Well, do we vote on that? All, approve it then? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay. You did on that. I get turned around on that, so good. All opposed, like, signed, so it's passed. Okay, under citizens' comment, we got, as far as citizen comments on the, against the rezoning request and in favor of the rezoning request. We got two in favor and about eight to 10 or maybe more against. So, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna start off with one that's in favor and then save the last one to the last after we hear all the against ones for the rezoning on this. So, all right. I'll call Ms. Bridget Grant up to speak in favor of the rezoning request.
Mr. Chair, citizen comments as well?
Yes, on the citizens' comments, yes.
This isn't?
Well, the, we're gonna have the citizens' comments after that. We have another. Yeah, I have two just on the regular citizens' comments also, so we allow those to speak also on that. So, we'll go ahead with Ms. Grant if you would.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Bridget Grant. I'm a land use consultant with Moran Van Allen. Happy to be here tonight on behalf of Griffin Land Holdings. My address is 100 North Tryon, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28202. I'm here tonight with John Ross and Will Walters with the development team and Sarah Shirley, the landscape architect. Throughout this process, we've been working very closely with staff, the community, and elected officials. Our goal has been to get beyond meeting some of the basic ordinance requirements. We recognize that we're asking for something that isn't currently permitted under the existing zoning, so we've attempted to use this process to raise the bar, provide more certainty, and establish limitations on what we are seeking. After the first two meetings, we participated in two additional town halls. And with each reading in town hall, we've continued to work on the proposed plan and refine it a little bit further. I sent an email earlier today that reflects all of those changes, but for the benefit of the community, I'll go ahead and read out a summary of those items that we've committed to. We're limiting to a max of 1.4 million square feet of industrial limited uses as permitted in ID-2. It's generally light manufacturing and distribution. We have a max of five development areas. We have a maximum building height of 50 feet, and we're not going to use any of the ordinance permissions that would allow us to go any higher. We have no heavy industrial uses. That all falls under the ID-3. We've prohibited manufacturing of tobacco products, zoos, solar farms, poultry hatcheries, correction facilities, septic tank service, and cell towers. We've agreed to provide right-of-way from the park out to Rodman Road as requested by the community, but we will prohibit any industrial access and traffic from the proposed site out onto Rodman Road. We're providing a sewer stub for future utility expansion. We are meeting the ordinance requirement of a 75-foot undisturbed buffer, but we're meeting the proposed ordinance changes to have a 200-foot overall perennial stream buffer, 100 feet on each side. We've included architectural commitments, and we estimate that over 45% of the site is dedicated to open space. Again, we really appreciate the time that everyone has put into this. It's been an iterative process with working back and forth, and we hope we've been as responsive as possible to the requests of the community, but also the board. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. All right, moving on to the against the rezoning request. Dr. Nancei.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. You got three minutes and?
I probably won't need three minutes. I am Nancei. I'm retired veterinarian. I live in Rodman, 2621 Rodman Road. My family has been here. I sent everyone this letter. I think you all received it. And I think all I need to do is reread it for the rest of the group. This is the one that I sent you, Ms. Mosley. My name is Nancei. I'm a retired veterinarian. My family has been here in Rodman since 1863. Those of us who strayed away to go to college and med school and created lives elsewhere just seem to return eventually to reconnect to this rural place we call our ancestral home. It is our bedrock. Rodman is rural. It does not need, nor do we want, housing developments or industrial developments. Our community does not need industry jobs. Giddy Tire has open positions all the time. Poly has open positions. We have repeatedly voted down the school board expenditures in the referendums. I believe that shows that we have a resistance to willy-nilly growth. I believe we don't need more planned housing developments, and we don't need to attract more industry. We need to protect who we are. If we wanted to live in a bustling city with unbridled development and lots of industrial jobs, we could move to Charlotte or to the newly-developed ecological and traffic disaster that used to be called Fort Mill. We don't want that to happen here. Our strength is being rural, quaint, quiet. All of these rezoning battles that we have fought have been a nightmare for all your constituents. These initiatives are thrust on us by folks who don't even live here. Not one of your voters will benefit from rezoning Rodman industrial. Look at the report that you commissioned from the planning consultant charged, Charles Compton. His comments in October, just this October, emphasized two important recommendations. One, that we stop doing zoning map amendments at this alarming rate and instead rethink the zoning ordinances overall. And two, that we accentuate the strengths that we have, the things that make us unique. I am sure that that means preserving a rural character. So, I ask you to vote, please, against this Rodman rezoning. This is our strength. Rural is the reason we live here. And that's all I can say. I'm tired. These folks are tired. Over the past few years, we have fought so many times just to preserve our quality of life here. The CSX debacle, the granite quarry on Fishing Creek, the other quarry by the school, 500 houses on this property.
Ms. Nancei.
I'm tired.
Thank you, ma'am.
We are moving in the wrong direction.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Willis, on this, I have 13 on this list here, and from me looking at it, every one of them is speaking of the same issue. What did we limit those to?
We did, but that's the pleasure of the chairman. Certainly up to you, Mr. Brown.
We're gonna let all 13 of you speak then. So, and please keep it to three minutes, and we'll call Ms. Joanna Angles up next.
Good evening. Really and truly, we've got to stop meeting like this. I echo what Dr. Nance said. We're all tired of having to fight for what we love, what we treasure. You have a very big decision to make tonight. You may see it as simply a zoning decision or perhaps an economic development decision, but I see it primarily as a moral decision. This drama began when the two Eccles brothers inherited 180 acres from their late uncle. At some point, they engaged Griffin Land Holdings to advise how best to manage it. The first strategy was to try to get the land rezoned, PD, planned development. Had that happened, a population equal to the size of the city of Chester would soon appear at our doorstep, at the edge of Rodman. We opposed PD, but we never, ever opposed residential. You may remember that I was the person standing right here before you, trying to encourage residential development of upscale houses along the creeks and streams on that property. Because my own property has just undergone a very thorough appraisal, I am sure that the Eccles could sell for $6,000 to $7,000 an acre, very possibly more, giving them each over half a million dollars. I feel certain that 99% of your constituents would jump for joy should they receive a gift of that magnitude, not these fellows. At one of Mr. Guy's recent town hall meetings, Dr. Bill Altman asked Griffin's Mr. John Ross, "Why couldn't they just leave it R-2, which has been for 30-some years?" And he instantly replied, "Not enough money." Well, after PD failed, in part because of your own economic development persons, directors' input, the current push is for an open-ended ID-2 zoning. The Eccles want to squeeze every penny possible out of something they received for free, something that they have no investment in, not dollars, not time, certainly not blood, sweat, and tears like the rest of us have invested in our land. And who will pay the true price of their, if their wish is granted? Rodman will, a community that dates back to the American Revolution. Those of us here tonight and our neighbors will pay. ID-2 zoning will steal away our beloved peace and quiet, and once that is gone, you can never, ever recover it. Now, I ask you, would that be fair? Would it be? Would it be the right thing for you to allow? One word's enough. I'll quit.
Ma'am, three minutes is up. Thank you.
Well, there's a word for what the Eccles are doing, and it's called greed. And please don't let greed win tonight.
Okay, calling Mr. William Clark.
Thank you again, members of the council, for having us. I'd like the clock to start now instead of thanking somebody, if you don't mind. Could that be?
Sir, I'm sorry.
Could you start the clock now? I'm just thanking people for letting me talk. Or am I already into a half a?
I don't usually start the clock until everyone has said their preamble, their name and address.
Okay, William Clark, 1461 Ashington Drive.
Thank you.
In Rodman. Mr. Wilson said at the first reading of this, quote, "This is a complex issue, not a routine rezoning," and he was absolutely correct. The customary procedure for years was reversed to grant rezoning first without any knowledge of what specific industries could later waltz in. How and why did this happen? Who knows? We don't. We in Rodman community have been falsely mischaracterized over and over as quotes, "They're against everything." First, they're opposed to residential Oakley Hall, and now they're against industrial. Not true. Please quit saying that if any of you do. In this particular case, we got to choose, we were presented with two choices, neither attractive. 500 small homes with 1,200, 1,500 new neighbors versus ID-2 with multiple unknown business activities at our doorstep. In other words, you're gonna be executed. Do you prefer to be shot or hung? Can't we find something in between these two unattractive extremes? A problem of a buffer around this property is important. Who will monitor for compliance of the size of the buffer? And what will the penalty be for non-compliance? You may remember the Winchester project. They were promised a buffer, and shortly after the vote, people went, and it had been clear-cut to the property line. Something has to stick here. Has anybody yet considered the diminution in property values, or residential property values, that will inevitably follow this industry when it's plopped down in the middle of an established community of homes, of therapeutic horse farms, of cattle business, and of also organic farms? These Chester folks, whom I've named here and what they own and operate, don't want to change their zoning to ID-2 in order to appeal for the higher industrial dollar that is being sought by the proponents. Lastly, and I'll end early, I think, please note the attendance at this meeting. Any of you who are here to support this rezoning, please raise your hands. I've personally attended six meetings on this rezoning request, and there have been zero citizens come forward to orally support this. You all say you've listened to your constituents? Here they are.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Going for that, just to go over the criteria for the speaking here, each person has three minutes. When you step up to the podium, state your name and address, and you speak clearly, and you do not address the audience, and you direct all comments to the council and do not approach the council or table unless directed. So, just to clear that up so everybody fully understand that. Okay, the next one would be Mr. Jason Alt.
My name is Jason Alt. I live at 3391 Edgeland Road, and I just asked to make sure I'm speaking at the right time. I'm not hearing about what these other people are talking about right now.
Okay.
I'll speak whenever you'd like me to.
Well, if you're on the, just the general comments, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. If you would, then that'd be good. I will put you on that then.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we want to, we want just to address the against the zoning. I'll get you. Thank you, sir. We'll call you back up.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Ms. Catherine. Ms., was it Gendhart? Gendhart, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Good evening. I am Catherine Gendhart residing at 2331 Rodman Road. I know some of you have already made your minds up because I've talked to some of you. So, this is a formality that you're going through, and you plan to vote the way you want to, the way you wanted to when you came in the room. I understand that. That's human nature. However, I do urge you to listen to your constituents here tonight. Rodman is a rare community. We have our neighbors. We care about our neighbors. We love our land. We love our way of life in rural Rodman. We love the history that we share. We love that our families owned land there in the Revolutionary War, and we're fierce about protecting it. I urge you to vote no for rezoning. Please do not strip away the quality of life that we have spent decades acquiring. Give us the freedom to live on our land without rezoning and stripping away our privileges. We're not interested in industry coming in. We're not interested in high development. We want quality of life, and we voted for all of you to protect us. We voted for you to look after our rights as individuals. And so, tonight, I ask you, please fulfill that promise, protect us, and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next would be George Canelas Amelius.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm George Canelis, 2335 Rodman Road in Rodman. And I'm here to speak for my mother, Hamilton Rodman, my cousins, who just, one who just spoke, myself. Both Catherine and I are both on the board of the Rodman Community Center, which we're trying to bring back, as you might know. And it's a site of the Native American Indians, the Catawbas, many arrowheads found there. It's a landholding site as well as an African-American site of a, of a family, Quay and Lucinda Johnson, who managed two very large farms in the past, and all that remains are the drawings of what it was, the sketches, and the foundation and bricks from the fireplace. But what we're trying to create in that Rodman Center is a place that is open and welcome to all people and in building a community. And my question, I suppose, is what is it exactly that the council and the people of Chester, specifically Rodman, want to see ultimately with development as we move forward? And I suppose it's, one is industrial sites or tightly-packed houses, developments, or a place that people can build on a five or 10-acre lots, a bucolic existence or overflowing roads filled with cars and trucks. This is less than a mile from that historic site of Rodman. The community center, family ballpark, one like Brattonville. It's sort of Chester's Brattonville and hope to see it grow in its shoes. The land right there is all James McClure, James McClure Creek that starts in that property in question and runs down and through the land further down, owned by the mother of three sons who, from Colonel to private in the American Revolutionary War, James, John McClure dying in the American Revolution, as well as nine other uncles in that same property, at the surrounding property that fought then too. Today, I was cutting the grass at the center on a new tractor. It wasn't new, 1968, that I just bought, cutting the grass at the Rodman Center. And I was daring a bit and drove it along the side of the Rodman Road. And not that they were driving recklessly, they were driving the speed limit, but, you know, 18-wheelers, four cars coming around, passing me, which I'm glad they did, instead of, you know, running into me. But they passed me on the hill, so they really didn't know what was coming on. The point of it is, sometimes roads can get overtaxed. And so, I ask you, though, as the council, though, what is your vision of what Chester can be? Because I know, I believe in it, and I know that it can be something quite nice. It's not that we're trying to create, in my opinion, a Virginia Middleburg, but we have something that's quite precious, precious to the council, precious to us as the citizens within it, and that I would urge R-2 with no change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Canelis. Okay, moving to Ms. Sherry Kelly.
Kylie.
Kylie.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Kylie. I live at 2532 Rodman Road in Chester. I've met y'all before. I've been up a couple times. And first of all, I want to say thank you for allowing us to have our town halls. I think those were extremely helpful. I think going forward, yeah, Cory really did a lot to get that together. I know Erin came. Really appreciate that. Being able to feel like we're heard, to be heard, is important. There's a couple things that I have been carrying away from these meetings that have concerned me greatly. I'm looking at you, Mr. Wilson, so I'm just gonna bring it up. You mentioned something about the person who owns the property should have a say on their property. And I totally understand that, and honest to God, if it was the Wild West, I would be 100% behind that. But it's not. It's 2023 in the United States of America, and that's why we have a zoning board, and that's why you guys are here, to manage laws, to protect the community around property. I can't do anything I want on my property. I have two acres of land out in the country, but I'm very limited by our laws that I voted into place to be able to restrict that. So, while I believe the Eccles do have rights, I believe their surrounding neighbors and neighborhood have equal rights, and that's what you're here to protect. And I wish you would really remember that. I know, I would, you know, I'd love to be able to say, "Go home and do whatever you want on your land, but you can't." The other thing that I would like to say is that, as Catherine said, a lot of you came in tonight and you say, "Well, I already know what I'm gonna vote. I'm just gonna vote this." And I want you to kind of take a look. I know tonight, there's something on the agenda about stopping the PD developments going forward in Chester County, because now we're sitting this and we're looking at, oops, we're kind of in over our head. We've got to see what we're gonna do now because we voted in all of this stuff, and now how are we gonna make that happen? I feel the same with the ID-2s. There is a, there's an industrial development site across the street, not two miles away, that's the same. It's an industrial park. It's on Q Moore Road. It's there. It has open spaces. It's two miles away. It's not like, it's 20 miles away. It's within the same area. So, why are we gonna flip another piece of property to accomplish what we already have in that community? To do what? To come back in six months and say, "Okay, well, now we're not gonna give anybody a permit to come here because now we're upside down." I think that would be a very poor decision on our parts. So, I would encourage you to vote no to the rezoning and listen to what the community says. Mr. Branum pointed out, there's more than 13 people here that would like to talk tonight. There's probably hundreds of people. There were petitions signed previously regarding things. You know, at what point do you just turn a deaf ear to the people that put you here to vote for the money? That's not what we're about in our county, and that's not what we want to see is growth. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, and next would be Mr. William Gildan.
My name is William Gildan. I live at 1424 Say Place Road, which is right off of Rodman Road. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. I just signed the wrong document. But I don't understand- But I don't understand why county council would want to change the rural R2 to an industrial, with it already being industrial sites all over the county. You're going to ruin this neighborhood. There's a park nearby where kids play all the time, they play soccer, softball, it's great. Nobody complains about it. In fact, I was on the group that helped get it over there. So please consider this, please consider that we don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving along to Ms. Roxanne James.
Good afternoon. My name is Roxanne James, 3007 Steel Village Road, Rock Hills, South Carolina, Chester County. I'm here tonight to remind you, there's three of you gentlemen sitting here that was with me back in the Winchester days, when I attended the public hearing for Winchester Project on Hernands and 901. There's a lady here who represented Griffin Landholders, and she agreed with us about the setbacks and boundaries around the property, and how this buffer would be there. Well, she got her way, they were approved. Now ride down around the Lando Recycling Center and see what Chester County's left with. Now, when they tell us they're going to do an undisturbed 75-foot buffer, think about this little old lady that lives across the street on Rodman Road. She and her husband are in their late 80s, you probably know them, their family, the Hollises, are represented here tonight. When she looks out her window, is she going to be looking at one of these buildings? Now, they say a 75, undisturbed buffer. Is it going to be true? Or is it going to be Winchester? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. Okay, Leslie Schefner, is that how you? At 2604 Blaney Road?
I'm not saying the wrong thing, I'm not stupid.
Okay, you're not speaking. All righty, how about Tim? He's not speaking either. You want to speak on just regular citizens' comment? Is that, okay, we'll put you on that then. All right, George Sweet.
Thank you for hearing us. George Sweet, 2528 Rodman Road. Been there since 1978. I was at Florida, working on my doctorate in math, and my wife and I came up looking for a home. I think Durant Taylor showed us some old, cleared out, five-acre spots around Chester, and then finally Ms. Collins said, George Lynn, take us out to Rodman. And Janie will tell you, I said yes before I went in the house. I saw the community, the feel of the place, the pond had fish in it, and I made my decision and have never regretted it. I stepped into it, into a wonderful neighborhood of involved people. We've been dealing with y'all and seeking your sympathy since the planned landfill development in the center of the county. Y'all actually had a meeting in Rodman Community Center, back in the days of the problems with cleaning supplies, with the dumpsters. Point of that is, this is not something we just do every time for sport. We pay attention, we care, and we've been involved. Now, what I've got to say is short, and hopefully right to the point. These gentlemen inherited land that was zoned R2, they have every right to sell their land, every right to farm it, or do things within R2. And they have a consulting group that came and suggested a planned development, which I submit's horrendous. There's no way we're going to go for that. Well, I don't think they were surprised. So what's the next thing to do? Get the county to accede to ID2. That's not what you can do with your land if you inherited it at R2. If we go with this ID2 thing, and as Bill Altman or Joanna had said, I too asked, well, why can't you build five-acre homesites or two-acre homesites? Not enough money in it. Well, you have only a certain reasonable expectation as to how you can exploit this thing that you've inherited. And thinking that, well, I'll kind of ease the county along and have, make it ID2, and then all bets are off, I can put all kinds of undefined things in there, that's not just, that's not reasonable. And I would hope and pray that y'all would see that, that you're kind of being ushered into the load and shoot, and being convinced to go from R2 to ID2 because they want to make more money. Well, who doesn't? But we try to govern ourselves by some morality. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sweet. Okay, moving along to Lydia, I'm not even going to try to pronounce that last name.
Well, I also, I'm going to speak, but I wasn't planning on.
Go ahead.
Lydia Vasquez, I'm at 2466 Rodman Road. I've been, do you need me to say anything else about the address or Chester, South Carolina? I heard everybody else saying that, so.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, Chester, South Carolina. And I've been here, I moved here right off of when COVID started, fell in love with Rodman. I've noticed the community, I agree with everybody with everything that they said. Everybody's a very good community, and my kids play at that Rodman, at the sports center, some of my kids play there. So I agree with everybody that, everything that they said. And I moved here from Charlotte, it used to take me an hour to get to work, and I only lived 15 minutes away. I don't want to go back to that. I moved away from Charlotte for that. Everybody has been very nice around here, and that's the reason I left. I don't want to go back to that. And I'm like, okay, am I going to have to move again? So please vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vasquez, I guess, I'm sorry on that. All right, moving back to the in favor. Was it Melissa Church?
Mr. Chairman, I signed up to speak on a different matter, I signed the wrong sheet.
Signed the wrong sheet, okay. All right, moving to the, just the addressing for citizens' comments. We'll go back to Mr. Alt, Mr. Jason Alt.
My name's Jason Alt. My address is 3391 Edgeland Road, Richburg, South Carolina. Appreciate you letting me speak for the third time on this matter. I'm representing myself and my 10 acres of land, my neighbors and their 10 acres of land, and then the next 10 acres of land, it's all right there in the line. We live in R2, it's R2 now, what they're trying to change it to commercial. And I am, for the third time, 100% against that, along with my neighbors and other people in the community. It was voted on 6 to 0 by the planning commission to start with on this, okay? And it was voted to deny. And then, you know, these meetings are still going on, but I just wanted to come before y'all again and say that nothing's changed as far as my view goes, and I've talked to several people since the last meeting here. And again, there's been nothing to make me change my mind, or to, you know, go for this in any way. And even the proposal of temporarily changing it to commercial with a reverter clause, I've looked into that a little bit since, and I hadn't heard anything that makes me believe that that would ever work. And I do appreciate y'all letting me speak on this again. And like I said, I'll take any questions or anything about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alt. Okay, Mr. Alan Deckard.
Good evening. My name's Alan Deckard, 10601 Agnes Douglas Road, Fort Mill, South Carolina. I come to briefly speak about 2023-29 Resolution. I printed the resolution and the attachments today and studied through it. I was glad to read in there about the idea to consider concerns of residents. I gave you a Fort Mill address, I've commented on this before when I've spoken on other matters, but with the exception of my wife and myself, all my family lives in Richburg. So I'm speaking as a property owner and speaking for many, and I'd say it would be correct to say I'm speaking for all my family. This is just a document, depends on what's done with it. And it says that there is a proposal to look at the impact of projects that have gone before this project that's being discussed here tonight, the rezoning. And I think it's certainly a good idea to have a pause in developments, look at some ideas about how to address the impacts, and see what can be done to address concerns of residents and property owners. And I would certainly love to see a better attitude between the various parties. I neglected to say, to thank you for the opportunity to speak here, anytime I've come in and wanted to, and thank you for letting me speak on this.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving to Mr. David Wasaki.
David Wasaki, 709 Skyline Drive in Chester. Today's my first time ever coming to a government council meeting. I'm here today to speak about Chapter 6 in the Chester County Code, which deals with animals. Today is my first time, but it will not be my last. Over the past eight months, I've been volunteering every week at the Chester County Animal Control Center. It is the highlight of my week. There's plenty of dogs there, and the time that I spend walking, playing, and exercising with them is very rewarding. During that time, I've had several observations. First of all, if you're looking at a dog or cat to your family, please adopt, don't shop. Number two, if you don't have time, or space, or resources for an animal, please volunteer. Number three, like our police and fire personnel, animal control are very thankless and emotionally difficult jobs. Small victories can easily be overshadowed by cases of abandoned, overbred, malnourished, abused, and tortured animals in our community. I bring to you today an example, and sadly because of the clerk's family matter, I could not bring a picture, but I bring for you an example of Sunny the Dog. On November 20th, on Fish and Creek Road, Sunny the Dog was dumped on the side of the road. I assure you the pictures of Sunny are not pleasant to look at, but need to be. Sunny was covered in bite marks, cuts, punctures, sores, and a broken leg. She was found by a local rescue, rushed to the emergency vet, but was humanely euthanized due to the extent of injuries. Indeed, Sunny was used locally as a bait dog for dogfighting. This is not a Sarah McLachlan commercial on your TV that you can turn off. This was five miles away, and this was two weeks ago. It is a reality in our community and must be acknowledged. Sadly, Sunny is not a unique case. In the future, I intend to come back to county council to work on amending Chapter 6 to improve our laws to prevent this type of activity. I don't know how to write these ordinances, I don't know where to start, but I have studied them, and I assure you that I will be back with the perseverance to get it done. My goal is to prevent another Sunny, a victim of overpopulation, inhumane treatment, and lax ordinances, lax ordinances that we allowed her to be a victim to. I appreciate your time, I appreciate the audience that's here to hear this, and I will be back and look forward to our discussions.
Okay, does Mr. Mrs. Schefner, is he the one of y'all who would like to speak? I know you signed up, but.
I would like for him to speak in my place. He didn't get here in time to sign the slip.
Okay, let him come up, state his name and address.
Mr. Chairman and the county council, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Benjamin Dubard. I'm at 575 Wild Hope Farm Road, right near Rodman off Blaney. So we'd be close neighbors to the proposed development. I'm the farm manager at Wild Hope Farm, which is owned by Tim and Sarah Belk. We employ in peak season about 15 people, and we hope to grow. Preserving the unique rural characteristics of the area is very important to us. We do not want to see a lot of industrial development come in so close to, you know, a park and to the adjoining farms. I feel like if the county would like to see more of this kind of development, I've heard from other folks that, you know, there are industrial parks nearby, I would also encourage, I'm a newcomer to the region, so I don't know if Chester County has a land use plan, but there seems to be plenty of opportunities for infill development in the town of Chester. And so I would encourage the council to also take a look at possibly developing in those areas instead of bringing some, what I feel would be unsuitable development, to our beautiful rural area. Also, it seems to me, from what I can gather, that there is some lack of transparency around what setbacks and what sort of development may occur there, and it seems fairly open-ended, and I do agree with previous commenters, that, you know, sort of opening the door to this, once it's done, could be hard to, you know, rein in once it has started. So, you know, thank you for this opportunity to speak, I just want to encourage you to please preserve the rural characteristics of the beautiful area, and to just take into consideration of the neighbors there and the community that we have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to number five on the agenda here, ordinance resolutions and propositions. Under A, second reading of 2023-20, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an amended and restated infrastructure credit agreement by and among Chester County, South Carolina, Morcon Incorporated and JFR Acquisitions LLC to provide for additional infrastructure credit and addressing other related matters. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of 2023-20.
Second.
Got a second, motion is a second. Any discussion, comments?
This is the company in Great Falls that has been a great manufacturer there for years, and has really been good for the little town, and they're expanding.
Okay, anyone else?
I spent about two hours on the phone with some folks in Great Falls the other day, last weekend, and this company is a really good company for the town of Great Falls. And... And Great Falls is looking to really be able to do some other things down there, and we need to support Great Falls.
Okay. All other comments or input, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. United vote to approve the second reading. Okay, under B, there's 2023-29 Resolutions Declare a revocable resolution to pause any further residential subdivision or planned development in certain limited areas of Chester County. I think Mr. Hester may have some comments on that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. If you don't mind, I'm gonna go to the podium and go through a couple of slides. Also, for anyone in the audience that would like a copy of the packet, it may not have it online, we have copies, sir. I've only got 30. I did not expect this many people tonight. Raise your hand, we'll get one out to you real quick. Ms. Callie, you would pass that out, please, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay. While she's passing it out, everyone, this is Callie Oliver. She is my new assistant, who I will introduce in administrator's report. And actually, Mr. Darby's helping with that, thank you.
So while they pass it out, while they begin to pass that out, the documents that you have, I'm gonna just make a brief statement as to, to give council, although council had a part in this, I want to explain what all the documents are and explain to those listening and those that are here in the audience, so everyone understands fully what's being brought before council. And so I'm gonna go ahead and start with the statement, and then we'll go through the documents. What you see before you on the screen is the actual resolution. And this resolution is designed to temporarily pause planned developments and subdivisions in a limited area of Chester County. The affected area that will be by this revocable resolution is shaded in brown and exhibits B and C, which are included in the packet, and we'll talk about that a little bit further in a few minutes. But I'm gonna make a few statements. As council has heard what the constituents have said, council recognizes, this council recognizes the need for us to evaluate what has been approved thus far regarding planned developments and subdivisions, the need to evaluate the effects on our roads, our infrastructure, our schools, the daily lives of all of our citizens. Council has done an amazing job with town hall meetings, answering questions from its constituents, holding workshops, and diligence regarding growth in this area of the community, continually taking into account the need for housing and rooftops versus the effects on the current and existing standards of life and the neighbors in this area. And the proof of that for everyone is not just this document, but the proof is also the recent text amendments regarding planned development and the discussions that have been had, and that's the proof that council has taken this seriously. There is a need for housing in our community. Take it from someone who moved here not too long ago and talked to your sheriff and your other public servants, but agreed we have to plan for that. I've had discussions with members of not only council, but also members of our community. I've listened to many of you in the community through individual conversations, church meetings, group meetings, town hall meetings, workshops, and various other ways that I am caught as I walk down the sidewalk in Chester County sometimes. And the introduction of what we have here is a result of those discussions and council's diligence and discussion. Let me be clear, this is not a, all right, this word just tricked me. This is not a moratorium. Did I say that right, Miss Winters? Thank you. But rather a pause on approval for planned developments and subdivisions in this particular area of the county. This resolution is revocable, and it means that for any reason that council feels that it should be revoked, they would be able to do so by one reading and a majority vote. This resolution is in effect until December 31st of next year. It can easily be extended again by a simple majority vote and one reading by council as well. So what are the big questions? What does it do for us? What are the benefits for us doing this? So it lets us see what the initial effects of the current builds, the ones that are already under construction, and the ones that are slated for 2024. Lets us see what the impacts are on our infrastructure, our services, our environment, our traffic. While we may not see physical results, we can see some of the indirect results over this next year, and we can plan for and project for that growth. It gives our school district time to see the effects on its classrooms and lets them plan. It gives CWR time to work on solutions for capacity for that treatment area and lets them plan. It gives the community and council time to breathe. It gives accurate information to the public about what has happened, what's been approved, and where, and it gives me and my staff time to work on creating a plan. My goal is to work to evaluate the need for a planner. I've already started discussions, but our current staff, we don't have, the way we're spread currently, we just don't have the time nor do we have the expertise in planning. I know, nothing against Mr. Levis, he's a great zoning and his job is to regulate and to make sure that we enforce, but we need to either consult or hire a planner. And we'll work to develop a plan of growth that fits the community and one that takes into account all the services and infrastructure that we have. And then lastly, by default, this resolution will drive growth to areas in our county where there is a need and areas where our infrastructure and services have capacity. So before I go into kind of explaining the slides in a little bit more detail, I know one of the big questions will be, well, how did you come up with this area? And so we use two main factors in deciding the area to consider to be affected by this resolution, and it really had, we used the school boundaries and then the boundaries or the area that's affected by the sewer. And the reason we did that is because I don't think anyone would appreciate us just randomly drawing lines on a map. And we do know that there's a lot of question around the ability for the Lewisville School District to handle the amount of students that can come with this development, and we all definitely know that the sewer is at capacity in this area, and thus the reason for creating this limited area. So let me go ahead and explain these documents to you in a little bit of a detail. David, could you please go to the next slide? And this is just a summary, and even with my glasses, I can't even see that one that good. So I'm just gonna kind of use mine here, but Exhibit A depicts subdivisions approved. So we've got three exhibits, A, B, and C. This is an explanation of those exhibits. Exhibit A depicts the subdivisions that have been approved by county council to date using two forms of analysis. The first set of document outlines each subdivision separately, giving specific information related to each subdivision. Also included in Exhibit A is a table that compares information related to each subdivision as well as giving more overall view of what has been approved. There's a couple of notes there at the bottom, and the first one is regarding a table of comparisons, the expected start dates, units per year, and expected completions. Understand that those are estimates that we made based on information that was provided to us by those developers at the time of approval or based on information that has recently come up through the building and zoning department. So we used all the current information, but some of that is still speculation when it gets to the further out developments. Woodhaven information is included separately with an asterisk. On some of the charts, just note that Woodhaven subdivision is not within this limited area. Woodhaven subdivision is a separate school district, it's in Chester School District, and it is a separate sewer treatment facility that has plenty of capacity available. And then the double asterisk is just for what we call the Hackett Project, and that project has had no activity since June 4th of 2018. We reached out to that developer and were finally able to make contact and have been advised that the project is not moving forward due to issues with DOT and access points from the roadway, which is 901, I believe, and there is no project agreement and thus no reverter clause on that zoning that was in place, but that project is not moving forward. So I'm not gonna go into detail on this stack here, that this is your detailed information. You can find the, when it was approved by the planning commission, when you guys approved it, so forth and so on, and it'll give you all the, how many homes were approved, the tax map numbers, addresses, and so forth. What I want to go to is the table, and I think the table kind of gives us more of an accurate depiction. And so if you look at the table in Exhibit A and you look at to the first table up top, we have Knightsbridge, Walkers Mill, Winchester, Stanton, and Richburg Meadows. Those are all located within this limited area in Chester County affected by the resolution. Single-family homes approved is 2,740, all right? That's what's been approved by council, all right? Now, we break it out into, we also add into that the townhomes that were approved, apartments approved, and then you have a total units approved, which is really the number you need to look at. And so for that area, there's been 3,180 units that have been approved by council. But the real number that you need to take a look at is to the right of that, and that's sewer capacity. So until the sewer situation is remedied within that geographic area in Chester County, only 1,800 homes will be built. Woodhaven is listed below that, which is 481 homes total, or units total, and then at the bottom, I list all of the subdivisions together just to show their school district, their fire district, when the construction has started, if it has, when it's projected to start, how many homes have been built thus far, the expected date of completion, and permits issued thus far. And that's where I tell you there's a little bit of estimating and speculation involved. If you would, go to the next slide, please. And so I have Exhibit B with water, and the blue lines, if you can kind of discern that, that's where water is available. You see your legends, it'll show the developments, all your different developments and subdivisions. They're labeled there by color and by key. We have two of our larger industrial parcels in there as well. And then if you look at, it shows your school attendance zones, shows which ones were planned developments, which ones are clusters, apartments, and it gives your fire district breakdown as well. And then the second Exhibit B is the same exact map, it just has your sewer lines that are in there. Some, I've had a few people look at the sewer lines and think that there's a little bit more sewer than that, but that's the best we've gotten, right, Mr. Levis from CWR? So that is the most accurate information we have. And then finally, Exhibit C is just a cleaned up version of that without all the lines and everything in it, and again, it just shows the area that's affected without your water and sewer and other lines within it. So thank you for allowing me to make that explanation, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hester, you're missing one. There's, I can't remember how many acres, but it just got surveyed within the town of Richburg right now. I don't know that it is sold. There's certainly been surveyed, and it's hundreds of acres of land right there at the intersection of Old Richburg Road and Main Street. That is being surveyed as of right now, and Mr. Long may know something about it because it belongs to a Chinese group of people, investors, and they bought all this land in Wallen, Wallen Group out of Charlotte, has got it up for sale, and they surveyed it right now. So you're looking, if that comes about, that's not county, that's the town, but the sewer is going to be the key ingredient to all of that, because they will have to use the land of sewer that, I don't know how much storage is allocated to the town of Richburg because at one particular point in time, they owned that sewer plant, and there was an allocation of storage allocated to the town of Richburg.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ed. I'm not familiar with that. I just went by approved subdivision and planned developments thus far in the county now. Mr. Levis, I don't know if you know anything.
We don't have any jurisdiction.
No jurisdiction there, so. And I couldn't answer the question as to sewer allocation. The last I talked to CWR was that they're tapped out.
The town of Richburg hasn't a representative on the sewer board. I will ask that question tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Yeah, none. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hester, for that update or description or further describe what's going on with this resolution there. So do we?
Yes, we need a motion.
We need a, we need a motion on this here.
If I may, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2023-29.
Second.
Got a second, Ms. Moses, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, got a motion, the second. Any further discussion or comments?
I do have a little that I would like to just bring up. I'm in favor of the resolution.
Is concerned with?
But as of today, the town of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina...
Speaking to the microphone.
...is stopping us.
That, we'll get to that later. If it doesn't have anything to do with this resolution, we'll talk about that later. All right. You had no more discussion?
One more thing, one more thing. Just want to thank Mr. Hester and your staff for a lot of hard work. I think the resolution is a good idea, and I trust that your staff will use the next year, 2024, to really, to really do the things that you spoke of. If we, if we didn't do any of that, this might even create problems, but I have full confidence that you will do those very things you spoke of, and I just want to thank you for the work you put in this. There's a lot of information here in this resolution, so I hope everybody got a copy that wanted one. The information alone is really important, because we all want to be speaking on accurate information. Even if we disagree, we all need to have the right information, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to ask Mr. Hester a question. It could have gone over my head, but I would like to ask him, what do you think as far as vertical houses will get in 2024 with all of these? Even though we, you know, we're doing this, what do you think the vertical, how many houses will go vertical on next year?
Let me pull my, I do have that on a chart. Not count, and I'm not gonna count Woodhaven, I'm just gonna use that limited area we're discussing, because Woodhaven is expected to start the first quarter. We're expecting Walkers Mill, and I think everybody knows where Walkers Mill is as well, to start the first quarter of 2024. I can't, honestly, they're only building 265 homes. Originally, they got approved for, or they started out at 305, or they got sewer capacity. They're only building 265. I'm gonna guess that they can build about a third of those a year and about a three-year build out, because I did get an expected completion date of 27, so that's the only other one that is expected to start next year. So if you take the number that Knightsbridge is building, about 75, and you, a year is their average thus far, and you took roughly 80, and then you added Woodhaven, and again, Woodhaven would be speculating as well because they've got a 2027 expected date. You might see another 200 homes next year, roughly.
Does that include those at Freedom Ministry Drive out there?
That's the Woodhaven subdivision, sir. Yes, sir, on Village.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. You had no other discussion? All in favor of this resolution, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? United vote to install this resolution there. Okay, moving on to number six, it would be the administrator's report.
I'm gonna hog the mic tonight. So I'm just gonna give a quick administrator's report. I sent this to council as well last week, but with regard to, first thing, just with regard to citizens and community, a lot of you try to reach out to me, the various mean... regard to citizens and community, a lot of you try to reach out to me, the various means. I'm not a Facebooker. When you send me a message via Facebook Messenger, I will not get that, not usually. Please use my county phone and leave a message with my assistant, and she'll gladly get it to me, and you guys know that I'll, those of you that follow that method, that I'll get back with you as well, or you catch me at church or at the restaurant, whichever. But just, I just, I'm not ignoring anyone, but I've noticed a few people trying to reach me in certain, certain ways, and I would not ignore you. So first thing I'd just like to go over real quick is this week, our emergency services director did post for our deputy director position. We, that's going to be his priority moving forward, and then he'll come back to the deputy director of fire. So that position's been posted, and again, I always like to bring up, this is at no expense to the taxpayers, not an added positions, it's not an increase from our budget, this is budgeted positions, whether we moved positions around to create positions, however, but we are not adding to our budget, and I think that's important for everyone to understand. But I would also just like to recognize Callie Oliver, my new assistant. She passed out, she's in the back. Callie, just stand up, please, for everybody. And so if you need me, her numbers are the same as Ms. Deason's were, and I'd just like to say publicly, thank you to Ms. Deason for all she did. She really did a great job coming in and helping me get some processes and kind of get organized and get things in place. And as much as I love having Callie on board now, I really hated seeing Ms. Deason go, but she went back to her passion and her love, which was EMS, and so she's gone back to that full-time. And as a former first responder, I know how that is. It's hard to get out of your blood sometimes. I'd like to give a quick update on animal control and the Rodman Project, just for everybody. I included them in my report, but I think it's important for everyone to hear. To date, the wetland delineation, that's another one of those tough words, and protected species investigations have been completed and uploaded. I anticipate Phase One of the ESA report to be completed in the near future. Field reconnaissance has been completed for the subsurface geotechnical explorations and topographic surveys, and those reports are anticipated before the end of the year. The wetland delineation has been submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers for approval and jurisdictional determination. Their review process can take quite a bit of time, however, given the findings in this report, we should not have any impact on our project. There are two meetings coming up in the next couple of weeks with a company that will help assist us with facility. It's not necessarily design, but when you design an animal shelter, you have a lot of fixtures and finishes and how the kennels are set up and how to move animals around safely and so forth, and so there's a little bit of that that goes in. We've already met with this company once, and they're coming back to work on that. Rodman Sports Complex, the widening of the road at the entrance, as well as the entrance gate move has been completed. The road inside the complex has been paved fully as well, and we're currently waiting on some cost opinion changes due to the field moves, which will create seven, eight fields as opposed to four fields that was initially done. While Alliance has been a great partner and agreed that their portion won't be any extra charge, there are still some subconsultants, and we have to redo a geo, the topographical and the geotechnical because we actually moved to the, to the part on the land where we're doing it. There's some civil process as well that we've got to go through because we've moved things around a little bit, but we're moving forward on that. We're just trying to, want to make sure that we're transparent. We're very transparent with, with those numbers and how they come in, that council is very informed. Mr. Darby and I maintain a very close eye. We have the money for this project, and we're, I think the final result of this project, the citizens are going to be very happy with. In the meantime, we have separate funds that were set aside from the capital project sales tax for our soccer field area. Our new project manager has designed some new bathrooms for that area, and we're looking at doing that project separately with separate funds, as well as the potential that we may have qualified for a grant that, because we're creating some ADA accessible bathrooms and so forth. And Mr. Eji, I knew those bathrooms were high on your priority. In the meantime, if we do undertake that before the other building is complete, we'll bring in trailered restrooms, not porta johns, for the upcoming season. So we'll make sure that there's as little impact on our kids throughout the season as possible. And then the rest of, I'll just briefly talk about sports league allocations. I know that's always been a very hot topic, and we've allocated money to sports leagues. We have created a process for that, and there's, there's forms, there's financials that go with that to make sure that we are allocating funds properly. But our new Parks and Rec and Tourism Director, as well as his staff, are working very hard to create a very fair, consistent, and sustainable for us process, as well as a practice for moving forward with how we handle fields and leagues. So just a quick update, any questions on any of that?
Have you, have you brought all that before the recreation committee?
The changes to the park have been brought before the recreation committee. Which, you mean the updates?
The updates and getting their input into it, or is it just being done and the rec committee doesn't have anything to do with it?
No, sir. The, our Parks and Rec and Tourism Director and our new Parks and Rec Supervisor are very involved with, with the Recreation Board, and they're buying on this, and I think there's continual conversations. I don't attend those normally, but I know that they are, there's buying from them on this as well.
I do have one other question for you. You didn't mention it. And Mr. Chairman, you were here, the meeting that we had about the zoning on, on Edgeline Road. But must all, Mr. and Ms. Blanks were not here because they had taken the sign down, the zoning sign down on the property as soon as this planning commission had voted six to nothing to deny, I mean, to deny the zoning request, if I remembered this right.
That's correct.
And must all, and Mr. and Ms. Blanks didn't know that meeting was there. So when Mr. Blank spoke last meeting, when you were not here, he mentioned that, and did, are we in the process of making sure we get something? Must Hester, to make sure that the zoning sign stays up until the three readings before county council is, is completed?
We did talk through that, and I think, Mr. Alt, we had a conversation, or he had it with Mr. Levisser. We kind of talked in a circle, but the, those are zoning signs that talk about the zoning hearing. Once that zoning hearing is over and it goes before council, it may, if, if we want to put some kind of information out there that there's still a zoning, we may want a different sign that talks about council because that one would really be irrelevant past that date. So that could be something, if council wished, we can create the sign.
We need to fix that problem because nobody was here to speak for the Blanks', and the zoning board that denied the thing, and the county council only heard one side of it, and Mr. Reed's side prevailed. Now, last month, we, last meeting, we changed that, if I remember right. So we need to, we can't, we can't zone if we don't listen to the people. And if you would work on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Hester for bringing up about the Dog Pound and the new building that is sort of, hadn't been up in the forefront much lately, but we've been diligently working on that, and I know I've heard some comments about this, that they think that we've forgotten about the dog situation that we have here, and I appreciate the gentleman that got up and spoke tonight on this, that it is a tremendous concern with the people in the county, but we just let them know that we are diligently working on that, and I don't know, after we do all the inspections and meet all the requirements for the new piece of property that we have for that, which the county already owns, that we'll hopefully we can get this thing started. Do you have any idea when that may occur in '24?
We should, I would expect that we are, and again, I'm going to say expect that if we don't hit any snags, that we're ready to go out for bid towards the end of, you know, the last, second or third to last quarter of next year, given the design, how quick that goes. And I, and Mr. Chairman, I held up a lot of these projects when I came here. I put a hold on them till we could get a handle on a lot of, you know, making sure that we were doing the right thing with them, and so, but we are moving forward with, with all of those projects.
Yeah, well, thank you for mentioning that and letting the people in the county know that we are still working on that, and that is one of the things that's still on, on the front burner, that to get completed, so we thank you for that. Okay. I'll go into number seven on the old business. We'll go to the update regarding the burnt meeting house cemetery, Mr. Neely Gaston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Neely Gaston, 107 Hillcrest Drive, Chester. Thank you, Mr. Hester, for you and the county staff for all the work that you guys have done to help us.
Yes, sir.
Achieve our goals. Just a brief report to you this evening. We have made repairs to over 25 headstones at the burnt meeting house cemetery. That's been completed by Golden Monuments. Additional headstones have been straightened, and several sunken graves have been filled. Additional work to be done includes additional graves to be filled and headstones, headstones cleaned, and your, and our committee is going to do that. Ms. Mosley's on our committee, and Ms. Anglin is here as one of our committee members. We've got a good, good team working on all this, so I'm very, very thankful. In my, in our report, Dr. Leader, Dr. Jonathan Leader from the South Carolina Archaeological Department is scheduled to do a ground penetrating radar survey of the site during the winter months. Heard just this morning, he's either going to do it this week or next week, so this is a, we're very, very pleased about that. We also have gotten information that we can get footstones, and it's about 16 by 8, a small footstone, for the damaged graves or the unmarked graves after we do the ground penetrating radar survey. We can put those in for about $200 a grave, and I've already got people contacting me saying they want to purchase some to mark, you know, family graves and things, so we're excited about that. We are working on a request for a South Carolina historical marker, and also our DAR matching grant proposal is in process. Second item, the SCV Third Brigade Clean Paul Cemetery, and if you're not familiar, that's also known as the Covenantary Cemetery off Appaloosa Road south of Richburg. We met with the representatives from the brigade back in October, and the work was done October 28th. The good news is they're willing to work with our committee in, in the cleaning of additional historic cemeteries under Chester County jurisdiction. So this is something I think is, as we plan for the future, as we work into additional sites, this will work. This leads up to a request of council. The burnt meeting house cemetery ad hoc committee recommends to council that the name of the committee be changed to the Chester County Historical Cemeteries Committee because we've been tasked with working with additional sites, even though the burnt meeting house is, is where we've gotten started, but there's so many more. So that's a recommendation that we are recommending to council.
You want to change that to Chester County? What was that now?
Chester County Historical Cemeteries Committee.
And Mr. Chairman, we've discussed that several times, and the committee has discussed it. We would just introduce that in the first of the year as an ordinance, and it'd take three readings to change that name.
Okay, we're going to wait, not do that tonight?
We won't do it tonight. We'll prepare an ordinance, Miss Winters will prepare an ordinance, and we'll introduce it in January.
Just wanted to get that on the.
Get it on the books.
On the books.
All right. Just like.
Any questions or, anyway, but thank you again, council, for your support. I think this is, this is a well-needed, and it's going to tie in real well with, not only the historical significance of the county, but with tourism and other things, so thank you.
For the Paul Cemetery, the markers in there were actually imported from Ireland.
They are the most beautiful stones you'll ever see.
It is, it's gorgeous when you get that cleaned up.
Yeah, we've gotten the site cleaned, and we're going to go in and do an evaluation on the stones sometime this spring. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaston. All right, moving to, moving along to B, is the third reading of CCMA 23-12, Griffin Land Holding LLC, C slash O, John H. Ross requests a tax map 106-00-00-121-000, located at Highway 9 and Highway 909, it is on from Rule 2 District R2 to Limited Industrial District ID2. The planning commission voted six to zero to approve, the, the planning commission voted six to zero to approve for a five-year reverter clause and no entry off of Rodman Road.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you, can I, can I make a different motion other than the one that's on, on this page? Can I make a motion tonight other than the one we have here? I've talked, as you know, I've had the town hall meetings and talked to several citizens, and we've had their input, talked to council members, and I would like to make a different motion other than the one that's on the page tonight.
Okay, I think that'd be good.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Yeah, Mr. Guy, that, that's really just the topic, not, not so much a motion, so if you have another.
Any type of motion would be, is what would be, whoever made the motion stated.
Okay, well, because, because I have spoken with the citizens in that area, and we've had our town hall meetings, I've spoken with those citizens via email, text, in person, phone calls. I've gotten a lot of information, I've done a lot of research myself, I've spoken with the majority of the council members here. I think it's, I think it's in the citizens' best interest that I moved with this third reading to make a motion of CCMA 23-12 with restrictive conditions. May I read those conditions?
Yes.
Those restrictive conditions, ordinance to become effective immediately as the recoordination and restrictive covenants against the property with the general restrictions described in the attached Exhibit A, which you guys will all see that I have written up here. You can, you can get it after the meeting, is if the restrictive covenants are not recorded on or before February 28th, 2024 of next year, then the ordinance should be null and void. If vertical construction of one or more of the, of the compliance structures on this property is not commenced on or before the fifth anniversary of the approval, then the property will immediately revert back to its original zoning. Exhibit A, which I will give you guys with the general restrictive covenant concepts, and one of the reasons why I came up with this is because if this is going to go through, I think the citizens need to, the things that they were concerned about, Griffin Land Holdings and the developers need to be held to some of these restrictions. I know that they spoke this morning, this afternoon, and they had some things that they, that they agreed to take out, but these are the things that I want to put in a covenant to make sure that it happens. These items will be a conceptual plan attached to the restrictive covenants. A conceptual plan should be attached to the restrictive covenants, covenants, permissible, permissible combination of northeast corner buildings into one. Maximum structure height to roof line should be 40 feet, not 50. Any antenna or protruding equipment shall increase the setback per the current zoning at an additional two feet each foot over 40 feet. We can discuss some of these after I read them. Minimum green space, open space for the entire industrial park shall be 50%. No outside manufacturing will be permitted, only outside storage. Outside storage areas shall be screened and enclosed to prevent public view. A 100-foot undisturbed natural vegetative buffer around the site. A one-hundred-foot undisturbed natural vegetative buffer around the site. All structures shall be a minimum of a hundred feet from the one-hundred-foot undisturbed natural, natural buffer, which will equal two-hundred feet from the property lines. Interests to the site only from Highway Nine, no Rodman access, no access from the ball field. All lighting devices, poles, et cetera, should not exceed twenty-five feet. I did some research, thirty feet is the minimum Duke Power power pole, and we're, I wanted to come under that, so when I say lighting devices, I mean lighting on the buildings and lighting on the poles should not exceed twenty-five feet. If a pole is, if a pole, and a pole should be at least two-hundred feet from the closest residence. Any building that operates near the maximum state federal regulated sound decibel limits shall be insulated on its interior. A hundred-foot setback buffer from any moving waterways. No hazardous waste incinerating industries shall be allowed. All structures shall be covered and constructed in the same veneering materials, examples brick, stucco, et cetera. I think we should have a say as to what those, we, we, we should want those buildings to all look the same. We shouldn't want, if this goes through, we shouldn't want the buildings to look different. We, we want them to look all uniform. Otherwise compliant with current county land use regulations, hours, operations, and noise restrictions. These uses will not be permitted. And I think she, Ms., from Griffin Land Holdings, she, she mentioned some of these. Animal processing, chemical manufacturing, including no flam, no flammable manufacturing, no hazardous waste manufacturing, no manufacturing of tobacco products, no zoos or botanical gardens, no solar farms, no poultry hatcheries, no government facilities, correctional facilities, et cetera, no septic tank service, no communication towers, no airports, no sports, racetracks, fairgrounds, spectator sports, racetrack stadiums, et cetera. I'd like to make a motion to only approve this with these restrictions and this general restrictive covenant.
Need a second.
Can you, can you make a motion at this point in time?
It's out of order. It's out of order. Gentlemen, it's out of order. It's not.
Sorry, we can't, we can't comment. I'm sorry. We need, need a second on this?
I'll second it.
Okay, got a second. Mr. Killian, now we can get into the discussion amongst the council.
The reason why I wanted to do this, just to let some people know, I could sit here and let this motion, we could do this third reading, and we can vote whether we wanted to vote, and I could sit up here and I can vote no. And if this vote goes through and I vote no, Rodman people got nothing. So I'd like to do it this way so they will get something if this, if this motion goes through, so that they will get something that they, that they want, other than just sitting here and voting no, me voting no, and then if it passes, they get nothing. I'd like for them to have something.
Mr. Guy, can I, can I ask you a question? Obviously, you put a- Obviously, you've put a tremendous amount of time and effort into that, but I have not seen that. Is it permissible to say, let's put it off until next week and give, until the next meeting where we have time to study this? Because there's a lot of stuff in there, I agree with you a hundred percent of them. But I want to read it with my own two eyes, I want to digest it, I want to talk to the citizens that, that want to, and to make sure that they're telling me exactly what to tell you and do that. But I, you've put a tremendous amount of work in it.
I guess I will. I'm okay whether it be up to the chairman and what he would want to do.
I've conferred with our lawyer, and she says that would be permissible, so we can assess the motion.
We'd have to pull the motions back, and so Mr. Killian would have to withdraw his motion, and Mr. Guy would have to withdraw his pending further discussion, review, and all of that by council, then you would ask that it be placed on the January agenda, which would be the next meeting.
But this is still open for discussion right now, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was just making sure.
The motion, there's a motion and a second still on the table.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. I was making sure I was right on that. So I see, I'm just looking at the parameters that they've given versus what you, and I, theirs is forty-five, roughly forty-five percent green space, and I know you're proposing fifty. The buffers, they have seventy-five years, is at a hundred for the undisturbed perimeter buffer, a hundred, hundred-foot perennial stream buffer, which is two-hundred feet overall, hundred on one side, a hundred on the other. I guess that's where I'm a little-
They don't have any, she didn't have anything about lights, she didn't have anything about noise.
Um, I think that, that was already in the ordinance, is that right, Mike? Sorry to put you on the spot there. The, the lighting, like, what would the lighting be if it's forty or fifty-foot buildings? Like, I don't know how that works, so help me out there.
Basically?
Nope, sorry. Double duty is night, sorry.
So basically, your, your lighting requirements are in your zoning that tells you they can't be directly in the direction towards residential districts? So it'd have to be all, like, down lighting, or pointed to the parking lot or to the building or whatever they trying to light as far as the road or whatever?
But they do have a height requirement, don't they?
Of fifty foot?
Exactly, so I wanted to come under the fifty to twenty-five.
Okay.
And in effect, what I just got from what you-
And I, and when I say under the, on the poles, I mean on the buildings as well, because a lot of times you put outside lighting on buildings, I don't want the lights fifty, on forty-foot on the very top of the building, and then everybody in Rodman are seeing those lights all night. So that's, that was the reasoning of my thinking of putting the lights at twenty-five feet so that those lights wouldn't be seen as well as the poles, because I did see in the zoning where those, where the height was higher than twenty-five, so that's why I came to, higher than twenty-five, it was fifty, that's why I dropped it to twenty-five.
Correct.
Yeah.
It, it would seem to me, we're hopefully going to pass third reading of the cluster development, taking that out tonight. Is that right?
Correct.
Isn't that right?
Yes, sir.
It would seem to me, Mr. Guy, that you're asking the county council to reexamine some of the zoning requirements.
No, no, sir. I'm not asking to reexamine, reexamine the zoning requirement. I'm asking to create a general restrictive covenant on this property.
On that particular piece of-
On this property, not all, not all of our zoning, on this property. I feel as though, just, just point blank, I feel as though this is gonna, this is gonna pass. The reason why I want to do this is because I want to have some restrictive covenants on this property, so that the citizens there will feel some relief as to what's going on, that they, their voices were heard, and some of the things that they voiced at the town hall meetings were actually put in, into a covenant and would be, this would be policed, and these things would definitely happen.
Well, I, I fully agree with you, but I would suggest that we do what Ms. Winters said to postpone it until our meeting in January, if we have time for the county council to study.
That's what we're going to do.
Could you, I'm sorry, if it's okay, do you know what the closest neighbor is? Like, I just, the housing and all, I know we had that discussion, and forgive me because I didn't retain that, but do you know the closest neighbor? Just so we have an idea of what we're looking at there, too, with the lighting.
It's our understanding that on the same side of the site, like, the closest home is over three thousand feet away.
Okay.
But that's not, that doesn't include the ones that are across Rodman or across Highway Nine.
Okay. Just to the-
It would be, it would be the auto body shop, Tracy Branch, or Tracy, wherever she's remarried, and the branches, and Mr. Ryan's son would be real close in there.
We're happy to look at all of that. We're happy to look at all of that, the specific distances.
Yeah, I mean, those, those are the closest neighbors you got.
Ms. Winters?
Sir?
I believe the motion and second can stand. There could be another motion to postpone, and then the motion and second carry.
They, if, if it's the will of council to postpone this, then Mr. Killian would have to withdraw, and Mr. Guy would have to withdraw, and then reintroduce a new motion.
To postpone.
To postpone.
Those couldn't just stand for discussion next time?
No, because you have a living, breathing motion on the table.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
And, and to clarify for me, what you guys would want is a copy of my, of my restrictions, so you can digest it.
Right.
Correct?
Okay, Mr.-
I'll remove my motion.
All right, you withdraw your, Mr. Guy, you withdraw your motion. You got the second, he did that.
I withdraw my motion.
But then, Mr. Guy, you can make an additional motion-
Yeah, you can make it with-
To bring this, to move this to January for third reading, for the date certain for the next county council meeting.
I was just going to make a request that you could email that to me, and I would send that out since Kaverin's going to be out for the remainder of the week, and that way I can go ahead and get it to the council and Mr. Hester.
All right.
And Ms. Winters?
I withdraw that motion, and I'll make a new motion that we postpone the third reading of CCMA 23-12 until our first meeting of 2024, so that the remaining, the rest of the council can have a, have time to digest this restrictive covenant.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that?
I, I had one question. So the motion that you previously made, that included the restrictions that were included in the email that was sent out earlier today, those in addition to what you read out, because what you read out was stricter than the email, so-
Well, yeah, well-
Those are going to get blended, or exactly how does that, how does that end up?
Yeah, because there's something in here as well about the sewer stub for future park utilities.
Yeah, we may need to, we may need to-
My recommendation is you just clean, as to what you made the motion tonight, clean up that document to read that, provide it to me and Mr. Levis, and we'll get it back to everybody. It'll be a new document.
Yeah, I'll get a new document out, and-
But the email that was sent today by Griffin Land Holdings-
Yeah.
There were details in there that were more restrictive than what we had seen previously, and so I would say we would probably want those included as well.
I agree.
It needs to be a blend of the two, because it included, I think, a seventy-five-foot buffer, which previously, I believe, was fifty feet.
Well, no, I, I asked for a hundred.
A hundred, okay.
He just upped it. I don't think, I, I think he went above and beyond theirs. I was looking at it.
So we need a, we need one document.
Yeah.
One document.
And the two documents you have, one is the one they sent.
And, and one of the reasons why I asked for a hundred, I, I got pictures, some of the residents actually went out and took some pictures for me, because I didn't get, I didn't, I'm not a hunter-type guy and like to walk through the woods. I got some pictures, and some of, some of these areas are, are pretty, you know, wide open, there's not a, I know it's natural, but you could just still see straight through. I just didn't feel like seventy-five foot was adequate.
All right, so you've made the motion that you will get this back-
I'll, I'll get this, I'll get this-
Until the first meeting in January, correct?
Correct.
With the other restrictions of-
Correct.
And also, all those, I imagine Ms. Grant would want a copy of that also.
I don't mind sharing.
Be sure to get her on that, so. We got a motion and a second on that, any further discussion? By moving it to the first round. Here it done, all in favor of moving the, the CCMA 23-12 to the first meeting in January? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, you're not on the vote to move it to the first meeting in January. Okay, moving down to the three, third reading of CCMA 23-14, Robert Reed and Craig Schaffler requested a tax map 124-00-00-008-000, located at 3353 Edson Road, Richburg, South Carolina, 29729, to be rezoned from Rule Two District R2 to General Commercial District DC. Planning Commission voted six oh to deny. Any motion on that?
I make a motion that we uphold the planning commission's vote to deny.
Whatever it is, just, is that that man that came here before?
We need a second.
And he wanted to expand his business?
We got, we got a motion on the-
They gonna deny him?
We got a motion on the floor, let's get a second, and then we can discuss.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Vaughn, any discussion on that? All right, now, now we can discuss.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, now we can discuss.
Go ahead, Mr.
This man that came up here and wanted to expand his business?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
And y'all gonna deny him? Really? And it's his land?
We hadn't voted on it yet, we don't know what we're gonna deny it or not.
I don't think that's right.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Levis. So I went out and spoke with the, Mr. Robert Reed about this, and he was kind of letting me know he wanted to put trailers on it, and some kind of trailers that he builds or something of that.
For moving, for moving, not, not livable trailers, like-
Correct. Yeah, like gooseneck trailers or something.
He wants to be a trailer dealer for fifth-wheel and little bit smaller trailers.
Exactly. So I was reading through the zoning, right? I don't see why he can't do that under the current zoning he's under, it calls for wholesale and retail.
Yeah, but it's, it goes by the NACE code for the type of retail that he's doing, isn't allowed in general, in R2, it's allowed in general commercial.
Okay, so as it stands right now, though, somebody could put a retail place on that property right now.
Correct, anything that's permitted or conditional or special exception in R2 zoning district.
Okay. Is this, what he's doing, is it a lighter or a heavy rezone?
It'd be, it'd be heavier, because he can do general commercial.
Mr. Reed, Mr. Killian, he owns, I can't remember how many acres, right on up past there, right there at Andrews Road, and he sells construction equipment. I've known him ever since he was born, known his daddy, knew his grandmother. There's really not any reason he can't put those trailers on that acreage he has and have it all in one place. And, and he never really gave an answer to that, and the planning commission voted six to nothing, not. I went to the meeting, I was there for the meeting, but Mr. Al, Mr. Ms. Blank spoke. And Mr. Reed's not going to be hurt. If you go down there right now today in Richburg and turn to the left at Bojangles and see what the veterinary clinic that's going to get built right there did, I don't blame Mr. Ms. Blank's. They clear-cut slammed to the property owner's line at, at that thing. By zoning, they were allowed to do that, and we just don't need to do that to Mr. Ms. Blank's, I, I don't think. Mr. Reed's not going to be hurt, he's not gonna, it's not going to cost him one dime.
I think, just in my opinion, the property that he's on now, and I went, I went out there the other day as well, just to kind of take a look and see what he had going on, the property that he has, he also bales hay off of it, and he has a pond there, which limits his ability to expand the business, and he already owns that property. To me, it makes a little bit more sense to move it closer towards Highway Nine, especially with the vets office going right there. Everything's kind of moving a little bit closer towards Highways Nine with moving that business and keeping the integrity of that property the way it is, such as like pasture land and things like that, kind of goes more with that area, just in my opinion. Now, I've looked at this ten ways from Sunday. It is his, and I know I've spoken with several of you and with Mr. Levis about the requirements for it. Know it's general commercial, and if we could make it a little more strict with the, with the regulation there and just have it basically for the retail trade, which is Section Two of general commercial, and just have it strictly for that purpose, that, as he's wanting to expand the business and have a larger area of land to do more business, if that is something that we would be amenable to, just as restricted in that area. Everything else is either conditional or- Everything else is either conditional or exception.
Can somebody clarify something for me? The land that he's on now, if you're coming up nine-on-one and you look off to the right, you can see the pond and everything. The land that he's on right now, that is already zoned general commercial. So he could actually park those trailers and put a building still on nine-on-one right now, on that spot?
Absolutely.
He's already had twelve, I mean, so what?
Not just that, for Ms. Mosley, it's all that.
So, so really, we ain't, really, you're not preventing, you're really not preventing him from, because right now, he could, he could put, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, with that being general commercial, if he wanted to put an adult club, adult club right there on that property, on the property he has right now, he could, right?
So it's zoning, so he has to go through special exceptions, so yes.
So what you're proposing is if we, on the other part, we will put a restriction that would prevent vet.
Exactly, and it would.
I'm happy.
Have him.
Because we can't stop it on the one he's in.
Exactly, and it would have his business expanded to suit his need there. That's just my opinion on it.
Does anybody know why the planning commission voted? I couldn't understand the minutes that I was reading. What, why did they vote six to zero? I couldn't, the, the minutes weren't, I couldn't figure it out.
When I was, I was there, Mr. Alt, Mr. Alt got up and Mr. Ms. Blank's had been in that house fifty-some years. Mr. Blank's and I go back to the first grade. Mr. Alt's wife's mother and I go back to the first grade. These people have been there forever. What the ten acres that, 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 Mr. Reed got from a cousin of his was originally the Louisville Academy, that's where the name Louisville came from. And that house was torn down because it deteriorated so much. Originally, the, the sub, electrical substation that's been built behind my house, that the planning commission voted to let them do, this council voted let them do, and the zoning board failed to let them do, was built. What, it was originally supposed to go right in there where that was. But the county council's employee didn't want it there because it would have interfered with the gateway and the plans red. I don't think we need to just spot zone and let stuff go because at some particular point in time, that piece of property's gonna be worse on. Mr. Reed has a business, he has a huge construction business. And he has hundreds of acres of land, he and his father own hundreds of acres of land. And, and to take ten acres and say, I want to put some trailers, gooseneck trailers there, it doesn't really make sense to me. Mr. Alt, would you like to address that? You did a wonderful job at the zone, at the planning commission when he stood up and he told the planning commission.
Well, I think the spot zoning issue is irrelevant at this point because spot zoning is only for two acres, is that correct? Two, anything over two acres is not considered spot zoning.
So is that what the minutes were reading?
Yes.
That's, and that was, that was the.
A little confusing.
The confusion, I think, in the meeting is it was considered spot zoning, correct, Mr. Levis? They, they said it was spot zoning, but it's actually not spot zoning. So I think that was, I, I can't speak for him, but I would assume that led to the vote.
Who you talking?
Mr. Levisster was there.
Who you talking about?
And that's, that's, I'm just speaking for him.
Somebody out there, who, who you talking about?
Was I called to the podium?
No, I'm talking about who you talking to, you was pointing at somebody dying.
Mr. Alt is the man that spoke before the zoning.
Yes, sir.
Planning commission.
Oh, okay.
All right, we got, we got the motion on the floor to uphold the commissions to deny, did we get a second on that?
Yes.
We got a second for Mr. Blank. Mr. Alt, have we discussed it the way we want to? Any more discussion? All right, the, the question is that the vote would be to deny Mr. Reed's request to rezone. All in favor, raise your right hand, that would like it to go that way.
Three.
Three. Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Guy, and Mr. Agee, all to not to deny that, raise your right hand. Four. Ms. Mosley, myself, Mr. Wilson, and Mr. Killian. For the passage. To allow him to be resolved. All right. All right, moving on to.
We, we, Miss.
Under the third reading of.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Typically, when a motion fails, we typically entertain a new motion to approve.
Okay, we need to do.
Am I wrong?
No, I, I, I agree with you. I thought Ms. Winters said we didn't have to do that because the fact that it was denied, it automatically passed, so.
The motion to deny didn't pass, I'm sorry, Brian.
Okay.
Okay.
My, I apologize for that.
Okay, because I was, that's why I'm looking across like, okay, what did I miss?
It's getting a little long.
Yeah, so we do need a new motion because the motion was three to four to not deny. I think you stated that.
Right, I stated that, so, all right, we need a new motion to allow, to go against the.
Is there another motion?
Well, before we make that motion, I, I need some clarity on something. One of the reasons why I voted with Mr. Agee is because if the planning commission voted because of some information they, they did, that they got wrong, you know, I feel like, you know, our process, how was that, how, how, who determined that they got it wrong? When did we know that they got it wrong? Why didn't it go back to them to, so that they would understand this language going forward that is not two acres, it's ten acres, because what's gonna prevent this from happening again? So generally, I don't like to vote, vote against the, the planning commission. And I'm sticking with, that's, that's the way I voted the first time.
I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna bring Mr. Levisster up and we did have a discussion about this, I'll let him, instead of me putting words in his mouth. He was at the meeting when, when the spot zoning occurred, I'll let him tell you kind of.
So, so one of the commissioners made the comment about spot zoning, but it was corrected, or all of them was educated after the meeting when they come and ask, was that correct? And they was all told no.
After they voted.
After they voted. Because it wasn't like, I make a motion that we have denied because it's spot zoning, it was just a comment during discussion.
So I don't see a problem with that, I mean, I do. I mean, after, if, if they know that, that, what they had, the information they had was correct after they voted, how's that, I, I don't see how that's fair.
I think, I think the question comes, does Mr. Levisster have the authority to interrupt their meeting and tell them that they're wrong in the midst of that?
That'd be like me, if you made a, if you made a comment and I stand up and say, Corey, you're incorrect.
I know, so.
They, they actually could have done what y'all have done, you haven't done it often, but you've done, where you've done a motion to reconsider, one of the people that voted in, in favor can say, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider because we voted under incorrect information, so that could have occurred.
Correct.
And so that's certainly something we'll, we can take up when we do commissioner training.
And that's what I'm just getting at, it, yeah, we probably need to.
Well, that's already been addressed and it's also on our agenda for our next continuing education to let them have that lawsuit, state law.
Yeah, that's all, I wasn't coming into it, I was just.
No, it's kind of hard to stand up here and tell somebody you're telling incorrect information, as Mr. Hester said.
I don't think any of us are here to undermine the planning commission either, we're just trying to all get a better understanding of it, what all makes sense.
But John was here, he heard the whole, it was just a.
I heard, I heard the whole thing and it was six to nothing to deny putting that next to these people's homes.
Correct.
Period, end of the discussion like that. If we're not going to listen, and sometimes I don't agree with this, but if we're not gonna listen to the citizens we appoint to the planning board, the zoning board, all of those boards, what the heck are we putting them on there for? If we're not gonna listen to them? There's getting ready to be one coming up real soon that nobody showed up the other night. I learned more at the planning commission than I learned anywhere. And there's one coming up, we're gonna be facing it. And he knows what I'm talking about. And not one person was there to, to speak against it.
So if I may, I'll make a motion. My motion will be to delay this third reading until the first meeting in January. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
For discussion, so I will say I'm generally in favor of protecting property rights, even when it's, you know, I get it. I understand why the neighbors have concerns and, and might not necessarily like what's coming beside them. But that doesn't necessarily mean that I believe, it's my role as a county councilman, that I should use zoning as a tool to prevent that. So it, it's a hard decision, but it's one that I, I, I had a good conversation with Mr. Alt the other day. And I told you on the phone that I intended to get by there before I voted, I have not done that. So this will give me a chance to get by there, it will give all of us a chance to consider, I know there's been some discussion about a, a restriction or a reverter. I'd like to make sure we have that reverter in place in terms of the wording of it prior to, prior to tonight. So it'll give us all a chance to get that done.
I'll second your motion.
All right, got a motion, a second, any discussion on that, to delay this third reading until the first meeting in January?
You're, just so I'm clear, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wilson, you're asking, I assume you were kind of looking to me to make sure that we had reverter language in, in there?
So, yes, so we need to, and I've had this conversation before with, I think, you and Ms. Winters previously, that we needed to make sure we understood that reverter language. I have a general idea of what it should say, but I've written, having it written out so that all members could see it before the vote, knowing that that's being considered, I think that might be helpful.
Yes, sir.
And in terms of that reverter, as far as discussing it, as we're still discussing, I, I think it would, it would need to be where it would be restrictive to the type of business, the, the gooseneck and light trailers that Mr. Reed has said he would like to have on his property, that we would allow that, but we're gonna, we're gonna restrict it to that. And that's kind of where my discussion is at right now. I know that maybe there's some legal opinions or other things to consider, but that's kind of where I'm at.
No, sir, the, the only reason I'm, I'm looking like I have heartburn is, is just procedural. I think, I'm just trying to think this through, that we have had third reading, but it was voted not to deny. And so I think probably the appropriate motion would be to reconsider the third reading by someone who voted in the affirmative, get a second and then move it for a date certain. I think that's a more appropriate, I know what you're trying to do, but I think that would be a more appropriate motion only because we, we had third reading tonight, if that makes any sense to you.
Could I ask a quick question? Because I know there's been, I've even had confusion over the reverter, you know, issue, and I, I know Corey and I have spoken about this. Would it make, I don't wanna say more sense, but would it be better suited if we were to place these restrictions with general commercial, just as I stated earlier, under Section Two, versus a reverter clause? That way it stays with the property and it wouldn't tie this council or anybody else up with any further complication if he were to sell the property, it just stays as is, and if he decided to use it for, or someone else, if he purchased it, if he sold it, someone else purchased it, or if he wanted to reuse it for something else, he would have to come back for conditional use or exception. Like would it, would it be easier for council or for the county to have it zoned under however I stated it with the Section Two, without the reverter, just have it stay with the land? Because procedurally, I don't know how that works. If he were to sell the property, how would we know to revert it back?
There's no way to track it.
I don't want to get into that confusion for future council or.
And, and I think that's my concern, Mr. Wilson, is revert, the reverter is a great idea, but our, our ability to monitor the sale, to know when it's sold, to, unless we just happenstance to catch it, or we ride by there and see something different, catching that to put through the reverter is, is just not something we really have a mechanism in place for when we talk about a reverter. Revertors are good for those developments when construction doesn't start in a timely manner, we know when that date ends and we know based on, you know, that, that land revert, so putting a reverter like this, while it, it makes us all feel good right now, the fact is we may miss it.
So you're, you're proposing changing the actual ordinance?
Well, I think the thing to do is go back to what Mr. Wilson said to start with and not, not, just do what you said and let's get that over with. Get to January and we have an opportunity to look at it.
To Mr. Hester's comments, I do agree with you, that makes sense, I agree. The idea here is what we don't want to do is we, I don't want to see this property rezoned to this and then I don't want it to be flipped and used for another purpose. We gotta figure out how can we keep that from happening. Whatever mechanism or tool we can do that, I'm in favor of.
That's my, that's my concern, this prop, this property being used for something other than that down the road.
That's why I was stating with the Section Two, only retail, you know, that, everything that aligns with what he's doing now or what he's proposing to do with it, that would be strictly for that property and nothing else. You know, I mean, I don't think he has any intention of doing anything, I mean, I don't know what the future holds, but I'm just saying that's the intention that he wants to use it for, then we need to leave it with that intention that he wants to use it for, for right now. That's just my two, you know.
And I think if y'all postponed to January, we can get answers to all of that and we can create something that makes sense for y'all.
So, so I think it might be wise, if, if it's possible, I don't, I don't know the procedural thing you were, you were speaking of, I'm not sure the answers to that. But if there'd be a way to actually postpone to the second meeting in January, that might give us opportunity during the first meeting in January to address some of this discussion we've just had. Because if, if the answer is none of that works, then we need to understand that and then we need to vote accordingly.
And make sure he be him.
I will say, well.
Make sure he be him when we do that, he needs to be up there too.
Well, let me just say in all fairness, I did speak with him about that, he's actually out of town working, so he's actually at a auction or something like that, I don't know, but he did tell me that, so he wouldn't be here, so. I don't think it's a lack of anything else other than that, and that was just, you know, just so you know, he's not, just not here. Just to speak on that.
Mr. Wilson, I think that all makes sense and then it give us some time to see if there's a way to put something in place that if council did decide to move forward with these types of reverters, how would we, you know, what mechanism or tool do we, can we put in place? Can we flag it in our system? Can we flag it in the assessor's office? What can we do to alert us? And so, let, let us take a look at the processes, I don't want to say we can't do it. Let's look and see what we can do. And now as to your point, to take the first meeting and come back and discuss, Ms. Winters, I don't know what tool do we have without bringing it back for a reading to discuss other than?
It, it could be a generic discussion on reverter clauses and what are some other options, it wouldn't have to be a third reading.
So it'd just be an agenda item for that.
Number of issues to talk about.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a.
How does the motion stand now?
So if, if Mr. Guy could withdraw his and then Mr. Wilson would withdraw his motion and just restate as motion to reconsider third reading for the second meeting in January.
I withdraw my second.
I withdraw, the only problem is I voted on the other side of that.
Okay, you did, so, you did. So if someone who voted.
Me or John?
Mike, John. So then it would have to be, and, and Corey. Okay, so you could make the motion to reconsider for the second meeting in January.
I make a motion that we consider reconsider, we consider, do a reading of CCMA two-three dash one-four for the second meeting in January.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Any discussion on that? Hear none, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye? Unanimous vote. All right. Moving on to B, third reading of C C T eight, twenty-three, dash, zero, two. R S, dash, one, Justice County Zoning Ordinance Tax Amendment, Single Family Resident District Uses of Chapter Four on four, dash, oh, one, zero, nine, R S, one, special exception, recommendation to remove text, R S, one, special exception item number two, planning commission voted six to zero to approve. And I guess I need to go ahead and read all of this. Cluster, what we'd be looking at is cluster single family development provided the Board of Zoning Appeal determines. And it is detached, single family units on minimum of two acres, development partials, minimum individuals lot sizes of fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty square feet, lot requirement per house may be waived, zero interior lot line setbacks may be allowed. Subdivision regulations are met, adequate provision for access and traffic safety, providing for safe and efficient access into and within and out of developments for the vehicles, pedestrians, and emergency vehicles. And G is public water and sewer available for property, the use is for the property and the use is compatible with the district. And then it goes on through your NASDAQ code is not applicable. NASDAQ description is for private household and parking is for two for each dwelling unit.
I make a motion we uphold the planning commission.
Second.
On C C T eight, twenty-three, dash, zero, two.
All right.
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion on this? Hear none, all in favor of this being the third reading of C C T eight, twenty-three, dash, zero, two, raise your right hand, say aye? Unanimous vote, approved. All right, E is third reading of C C T eight, two, three, dash, zero, three, P D, Justice County Zoning Ordinance Tax Amendment Plan Development District Regulations, Chapter Four of four, dash, one, three, zero, recommendation to add new text, P D Plan Development District Regulations, planning commission vote six to zero to approve. And up under that, it states that the maximum number of units, the units, the number of units shall not exceed the guaranteed allotment for service of water and wastewater. Should the water and wastewater guarantee expire before the development construction begins, the zoning shall revert to the previous zoning.
I make a motion we uphold the planning commission. On C C T eight, twenty-three, sixteen, no, no, oh, three.
Three, dash, zero, three.
I'll second the motion.
All right, got a motion. All right, any discussion on this? All hear none, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye? Unanimous vote on that. Under new business, the first reading of C C M A twenty-three, dash, sixteen, Melissa P. Church requests tax map number one, zero, four, dash, zero, zero, dash, zero, zero, dash, zero, two, six, dash, zero, 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 located at eighteen forty-three, Green Arts Drive, Rock Hill, South Carolina, twenty-nine, seven thirty. It's been rezoned from Rule Two District, R two, to Rule One District, R one, planning commission voted five to zero to approve. Any motion on that?
I make a motion we approve the planning commission on C C M A twenty-three, dash, sixteen.
All right.
Second.
For anybody that doesn't know where that is, that's over there in your Crowder's trucking over in that area.
Crowder, Jim Crowder. I got you.
Off Fishing Creek.
Fishing.
It's on South Fork, I think.
Yeah, South Fork.
Yeah.
We need to, still need a second.
I did.
She seconded.
Yes, sir.
All right, got a motion, second. Any discussion on this? Hear no discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye? Unanimous vote, passed. Under B, council to approve a matching grant for the first phase of lighting projects in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars for the Chester Catawba Regional Airport, Airport Director, Mr. Keith Roach. I thought I saw him back there. It wasn't Mr. Roach.
Good evening to the council members. Recently, the federal government allotted five billion dollars to the FAA for projects and most of that money went to the big airports. Two hundred million of that was allotted for general aviation airports. Out of that two hundred million, we requested and got three major projects funded at a hundred percent at about three million dollars. After that, the FAA offered us a grant to improve our lighting to go along with those three major projects. The total project's going to be one point four million dollars. They decided that they would like to break that project into two parts. The first part being design and building and bidding processes. That actually started off at a hundred and twenty-three thousand. It's been amended to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand or some odd dollars. We've already been allotted a hundred and twenty-three thousand of that by the federal government. That is ninety percent. The state has already offered a five percent addition to that. It's sixty-eight, eighty-three. I'm requesting sixty-eight, eighty-four, which would be five percent to start the first phase of that lighting project, which will be in this fiscal year twenty-four.
Okay, this is, the six, eight, eight, four is would be the county's part to match.
That would be the local county's part.
I guess this has already gone through the Treasury Department?
It's been approved by the treasurer and myself.
So, okay, y'all hear Mr. Roach's request to put in for this grant and the county will match it at six thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Any motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the matching grant for the first phase of lighting projects in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars with Chester Catawba Regional Airport.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mosley. Any discussion?
So are we expected to edit later time, approve a matching grant for the phase two?
For phase two.
Also affect five percent?
That has, that will be a five percent match on our part with the state picking up five percent also. And it would be the balance of the one point four, which has verbally been orally agreed to by the FAA. That grant offer for that second phase has not officially been made, but it will be.
Mr. Wilson, that'll be in the tune of seventy thousand dollars. That would go on twenty-four, twenty-five budget year.
And you'll be ready for it.
Yeah, we're, we've, Mr. Roach and I have already had major discussions. And I think it's important while we're in discussion just to understand that since he's been with us, we've had over three and a half million dollars worth of work and it's cost the county a hundred and ten thousand dollars at that airport. And he continues to plan and do an excellent job to make sure that our airport is going to be not just a good local airport, but one of the best in the state of South Carolina because he's got two runways up there, which is important.
That's very important. And that's on the agenda within the next five years. The state has actually came up with some money from this COVID relief stuff. The federal government actually offered them some money for secondary runways. That is unheard of. The FAA does not fund second runways. Approximately, it was estimated at three million dollars to repay that runway. It's the original runway. It's been there since nineteen forty-one. It is a very valuable asset to the county to have that second runway for wind directions and emergency landings. We would be one of the airports within a fifty mile radius that has that. I've committed to be the third in line to get that money to have our runways repaid. And hopefully we can, we making preparations ourselves to save what monies and funding we can to go towards that seventy thousand or actually it would be, that's probably that number from three million dollars is probably going to be increased. So we would like to pay as much of that portion we can with our own funding. We will be requesting the balance of that from the county.
I've always said, ever since I've been on council, that that just airport is probably one of the biggest diamonds in the rough that the county has. And that what I'd like to see happen, what would really make this airport really go is water and sewer.
You're exactly right.
Water and sewer is going to be the key to that thing blooming to its potential, I think.
The water and sewer is two miles from us.
That's what I say, but we need to find some grants or somebody for, or come up with some type of solution to see, can we get that water and sewer there? That would be my wish in the future, in not too distant future.
Well, every day.
And thank you for what you were doing up there.
Every day, that airport's becoming more valuable to this county.
Oh, yeah.
When I took over, it was valued at about three million dollar asset. It's up to seven million now.
Yeah.
We've got a thousand acres, usable acres for aviation, and all the surrounding airports are just about at capacity. That leaves us in the hot seat. It's going to happen, but it's going to take a little planning.
Yes, it is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We did vote on that, right? And we hadn't voted on it.
No, no.
All in, all in favor of matching the funds of six, six thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars, raise your right hand, say aye? All right, so we'll do that. Unanimous vote. Okay, the first reading of C C T two, three, dash, zero, four, G C, Chester County Zoning Ordinance Tax Amendment, General Commercial Regulation, Conditional Use, Chapter Four of four, dash, one, one, seven, recommends to add new text. G C, General Commercial District Regulations, and the planning commission voted five to zero to approve. And those conditions are meat processing, deer meat only, provided all following conditions are met. The structure in which processing takes place must be within one hundred feet from promptly lines. During processing, deer carcasses must not be visible for public view. All remains must be discarded in accordance with applicable DHEC regulations. And this falls up under code, I guess it's next code, three, one, one, six, one, two, meat processing limited to deer meat and one for each three hundred square feet of forest place. Need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion. We approve the first reading of C C T two, three, dash, zero, four.
Need a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Killian. Any discussion?
I'd like Mr. Levish to come up and explain what's changing on this.
The only thing that's changing is you're adding to where it's going to be a conditional use for meat processing, for deer meat processing only.
It's the deer meat only part.
Correct. Because it's not, the only district that is allowed in now is R two zoning district. And it was a recommendation from Mr. Branham, the chairman, to make that new tax amendment to allow under conditional conditional uses in general commercial.
Would it move out of R two, too?
No, sir. It was no recommendation to remove it. It was just a recommendation to add the language in general commercial.
So you can't process a hog, man?
No, sir.
Nor a cow. Or a goat. All right, any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye? Unanimous vote, passed. Okay, moving on along to D, first reading of C C T eight, twenty-three, dash, zero, five, Chapter Three on the three, dash, one, zero, seven, accessory structure application. Tax amendment recommended, recommendation to add new text, new text to be added in red. Planning commission five to zero to approve. Okay, up under that, I guess we would read the three, that application planning commission voted on was to three point, three point, one point, one, zero, seven, accessory structure application. No necessary structure or building shall be constructed prior to construction of the principal building on the lot. Buildings intended to serve as accessory structure constructed prior to the principal building shall be considered the principal building and shall meet all applicable district and building code regulation. The exception, property classified as agricultural use and tax max office. And then this is what is in red. This is the text that's supposed to be added. However, automobile, garages, and carports shall be allowed to be in front of the principal building by meeting the front yard setbacks for the applicable district. Need a motion on that?
I'll move that we approve first reading.
All right, second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
This just came to the chief of police in Fort Long was that gentleman that came and asked us to do this.
Yeah, yeah, we did. And I thought he had a valid point on that. No more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye? Unanimous vote. Okay, under B, accessories structures shall be located in the rear or sides of the principal building and shall meet accessory yard setbacks and application.
Mr. Chairman, you're on the same one still.
That's on the same one.
Okay.
You're on E.
Well, yeah, I read the only change that made, so that should do it. So that should take care of B, C, and D under that item.
Yep, we're good to go to the next one.
Okay. All right, approval of Enterprise IT Security Backup and Disaster Recovery Solutions for a three-year contract in the amount of eighty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. Mr. David, second.
Hey, good evening, council. I'm here seeking approval on a thirty-six month, thirty-six month contract with Enterprise IT Security in the amount of eighty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. This is our backup and disaster recovery solution for the county. It is already a pre-budgeted item and this contract is on omnia partners contracts.
Yeah, this is, this is a big deal all over the state and probably all over the United States and all over the world about having these recovery solutions and stuff and having stuff to back up stuff.
Yeah, this current solution was, is used by one of the surrounding counties and saved them from ransomware event, so, yep. Excuse me, I've got a cough coming on, yeah.
I'll move that we approve this three-year contract in the amount of eighty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents to Enterprise IT Security for backup and disaster recoveries.
Got a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mosley. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye? Unanimous vote, in favor. Okay. Getting down to number nine on the, which is executive session. Executive session is going to be for personnel matters regarding the county administrator. I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move that we go into executive session.
All right.
Second, second.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye?